All right, it's 6:30 so we're gonna go ahead and get started. And at this time, we will start the meeting off with Pledge Allegiance by Paige.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll approve the consent agenda in a single motion. I need a motion to approve the agenda items including meeting agenda, the December financial fund balance statement, amendments of the December 20 regular meeting, updated substitute teacher listing, payment of monthly bills excluding payments to Larry Vincent and Cooper Lumber. Does anyone want to make the motion? Michael makes the motion out of a second. Mark seconds. All those in favor. Here is a six, four, and none against. Next, I need a motion to approve payments to Larry Vincent and Cooper Lumber. Does anyone want to make that motion? Mark makes the motion.
I'll say it.
Michael seconds. All those in favor. Here is a four, four, none against, and two abstentions, strong and flitler.
At last month, we announced who our student board member was, and you get to meet Paige. We're excited for Paige to get started. We got to meet the other day, a little bit, and talk about really what the board meeting was about. But just for those of you that weren't there, Paige Kimmons is our student board member, elected by her fellow students. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, what you like to do.
My name is Paige Kimmons, and I'm a sophomore here at Ava High School. I'm involved in volleyball, dance, band, track, student council, and a lot of other clubs like that. And I'm just really excited to meet you.
We appreciate her taking the time out, because obviously he has a busy schedule, so we're excited to involve Paige. And she and I are talking currently about some things that she can do with the board to bring the board student perspective. So we're gonna try to roll that out here in the next 30 to 60 days, so we can start giving us a regular report.
Next, we have our MSBA Spotlight.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to this special edition of the MSBA Board Report. We are coming to you from the office of the Governor at the State Capitol in Jefferson City, and we are honored to have with us for our discussion the Governor of the State of Missouri, Mike Parson. And Governor, thank you so much for inviting us into your office.
I'll be glad you're here. Welcome to the Governor's office.
Well, we have a few questions we'd like to ask you, Governor, related to education issues, but before we do that, I'd just like to ask you about being Governor. You were, you assumed this office under some unusual circumstances. You've been in office for a few months now. You've traveled, it seems like, everywhere across the state of Missouri. What are your impressions, you know, of the state of Missouri and the concerns people have?
You know, I think one of the things that's important for people to understand is how people have been, have treated me and the First Lady everywhere we've went. You know, the transition period was tough. It was tough for the whole state, but people have been overwhelmingly supportive of what we're doing, no matter what region of the state we've been, and I think that's important for people to understand that. I think everybody wanted somewhat of a little bit of a calmness in the state of Missouri. I think we've been able to deliver that. And it was important for me to get out and make sure everybody knew everything's gonna be okay. And really, we just focused on moving forward since day one. You know, everybody knows kind of what occurred here in our state, and really what we want to do is we want to put Missouri in positive light, and we really want to move Missouri forward. And I think one of the biggest challenges for us is to now, to talk about that, but now it's getting it done. How are we gonna move forward in the state of Missouri? And I think there's a huge opportunity, so I'm excited about it right now. It's, I'm enjoying the part of planning that, and it's just great to work with so many great people across the state.
One of the priorities that you've established, Governor, is workforce development in our state, part of moving the state forward, and that, of course, relates to education, doesn't it?
Oh, that would be a huge role in it. And you know, I want to say this about the education community, since I've been here in the Governor's role, trying to figure out how are we gonna be workforce development? How are we gonna mix the private sector with the educational side of it? And I'm just, you know, right now, everybody is so focused on understanding what that need is, so we deal with the education system at all levels of education. They really realize now too, hey, we gotta be a little more in tune, I want to say, to the private sector, and they're really stepping up and doing that. As I talk to superintendents, and I talk to people in the classrooms, and to higher education, you're really seeing that focus. They know that workforce development's important too, and that we gotta prepare these young men and young women really for what the workforce is gonna be like. So I think there's really just a effort right now to partner with the private sector, with the state sector, and then with the education community. I'm just very optimistic that we're gonna find a lot of solutions coming up here in the near future.
Another issue I'd like to ask you about, Governor, is early childhood education and giving more families and children across our state access to early childhood education. Is that something we can move forward on in Missouri?
Yeah, you know what? I think that's gonna be a discussion. I don't know how quick we're gonna move forward on that, but if you want to look at long-term effect of the state of Missouri, if you really want to look how we're gonna change society as a whole, it's gonna start with early childhood development. I mean, I just think that's gonna be a part of the tool, and the quicker we get to those children to really change Missouri, I think it'll be important. So I think we gotta have that discussion if we really want to look at what's best for Missouri. You know, that has challenges sometimes when you start talking about early childhood development and everything, but the reality of it is, and I think if it changes society as a whole, I don't believe you're gonna change very many 50, 60-year-old people. I just don't, and I'm in those categories. So, you know, I think we are who we are, but I really do think if you want to change society the way, the way we, the people have got, I want to say trapped into society a little bit because of government, a lot of it, you know? But if you can take those young children and give them the tools they need, give them the soft skills they need, give them the education they need, that's how we'll really change who we are in this state. And so early childhood development, yeah, it's on the table. We want to try to figure out if that's a possibility to do that at some point, but I do think it needs to be a statewide program.
Another issue, Governor, for our schools these days is school safety, and while our schools remain very safe places for our kids, that's a high priority for our local school boards around the state to make sure that environment is as safe as possible so kids can learn. And you're a former law enforcement person yourself.
Right, right.
So do we need to do more on the state level in terms of policy related to school safety?
You know, I think you always want to do more with, and be practical about it, but anytime we talk about safety, you know, we need to look at what technology is available out there. You know, how is the school systems, are we really making our school systems safer? We need to look at that. But I think right now Missouri does a good job on that. I think when you look at the local school boards, what they do, that's a focus of theirs. That's a priority, because there's one thing, you know, we all know that when it comes to our children, we're all very protective of that. And the last thing I, you know, I want as the Governor of the state of Missouri is make sure that I'm not giving the school systems the tools they need to keep schools safe. So that's a priority of ours to make sure they got what they need. But I also think it's important that we realize, hey, we gotta change with the times. If there's better ways to do it, let's accept the fact, hey, we need to change too, and again, at the end of the day, it's really about taking care of those kids.
Another issue that we've been concerned about, Governor, is charter schools in our state. Of course, we have charter schools right now in St. Louis and Kansas City. There have been some proposals to expand charter schools beyond those areas to other areas. Do you have any views on charter schools and whether or not they should be expanded in our state?
You know, I think there's gonna be something for the board to decide. I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna see the charter school side, the education side of it, the boards are gonna work together. I've heard some committees out there, you know, that I know people on both sides of that, but I think you're gonna find out some common ground that we can agree on to move forward. I think there's a place for both, I really do, you know, and I think we have to realize that. But you know, it's like anything, it's gotta be a fair playing field for everybody, you know, what that is. So, and at the end of it, for me, what's important is, you know, what's that input? What's the result? Because at the end of the day, that's how we want to be judged by that.
Another issue I wanted to ask you about, Governor, is related to what are called education savings accounts. They have different names, but they're, the idea is of a tax credit of some sort that, in our view anyway, might end up essentially supporting private schools with tax dollars, which is a concern of ours. Do you have any views on that issue?
Right. Well, and you go into the voucher area, where that is and everything. Again, I'm just gonna say this, we all know how this, this argument's been over the years. I've been involved in that on both sides of it, listened to it. I've always been a supporter of public education. Do I think we just continue to do things the way we've done because we've been doing it for 20, 30 years? I don't think government should be run like that. So to answer your question, I don't know if you're gonna get that direct answer you want, but the bottom line is I think everything should be on the table. I think we look and see what options are out there. If there's a better way to truly do it, to educate our children, you know, I don't think we should be afraid of that, you know, in some parts of the state. If, where I'm from, in my, the public school systems do a great job. Day in and day out, they get it right. They really do. Does that mean all school systems are that way? They're not, and we all know that. So not to say we don't need to address these issues just because we've always done it this way, or because we're a little worried about change, I think we gotta look at that sometimes, but you know, I, there's been no secret in me, you know, I'm supportive of the public education system, this has to do a good job, but do I think we're perfect? No, I do not.
And I have to ask you a question related to funding for education, Governor. That's always a concern, you know, of our school boards.
Yes.
And the state's support for that. And specifically, one of the areas that our boards have been concerned about lately has been student transportation funding from the state level, and that the local school districts have had to use more of their budget money to fund student transportation, getting hits to and from school.
Right.
Do you see any prospect for some improvements in transportation funding?
Yeah, I gotta ask you, though, we were working on appropriations before I was doing this interview. Did you know what we were talking about before we took this interview when it dealt with transportation?
I do not.
Maybe you had a inside track into what we're talking about in here. Let me just say this, the transportation's a huge issue, especially, especially in rural Missouri, you know, and that's why I'm, so transportation, we gotta address. You know, we still, you know, one of the things we want to do, we're trying to figure out how do we fully fund the formula? We all know what that discussion's been. So to, you kinda gotta do that balance and act there. So we want to fully fund the formula. That's something that, you know, we're gonna try to get done. So what we can do, where we can find other revenues, streams of revenue to help with transportation, we want to take a look at. But it's, but it's an issue out there, fully aware of it, and so we're gonna do what we can to help with that situation.
Another important issue that you've dealt with during your time as Governor has been the State Board of Education, and you have made some appointments to the State Board, which we think are outstanding appointments, by the way. And the State Board then has moved forward with hiring the Commissioner of Education, Margie Van Deven, and you made a big issue during this whole process of the importance of the independence of the State Board of Education. Why, why do you think that's important?
Well, I think that's the way it's set up to be. I, you know, I think you gotta try to take politics out of that as much as possible, and I think as a Governor's role is to make sure you put qualified people on there and they're allowed to make the decisions. And, and you know, anytime you have a board, when you have numerous people, there's a reason there's a board, and there's a reason there's so many people on there, that everybody has their input. And I think the challenge for, for me was to try to figure out, okay, who are qualified individuals that you can really put on that board that understands education, that understands the state of Missouri, and how do we make it better? How do we get better? And then the other thing is, you know, sometimes you just gotta let them go do their jobs. And even when it's times when, you know, they only throw up with something maybe that totally agree with or something like that, but that's what they got put there, and that's why you gotta have confidence in them to do the right thing. I do think we have a really good board right there right now, and I think we're gonna move forward.
Governor Mike Parson, thank you so much for talking with us. We really appreciate you sharing your views on these various issues and inviting us into your office, and we really appreciate the real leadership that you're providing to the state of Missouri as Governor.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you for joining us on this special edition of the MSBA Board Report.
If you didn't love all those answers, I'll make you feel better in just a minute. So, a couple things. Board of Education Recognition Week, February 10th through the 16th. MSBA Legislative Forum is February 13th, so if you're interested in that, see me. Spring Regional Meeting, which will be locally in our area, is April 22nd. With more information coming about that, just those are dates I'd like for you to keep on your calendars. Okay? Thank you. Our board's spotlight is our Board of Education, since we will not be, that recognition week is prior to, our next board meeting's after recognition week. So this is actually a proclamation by the Governor. I'm gonna read, each of you have your certificate as well, but it's Office of the Governor, State of Missouri Governor's proclamation, whereas system of quality of public education is essential to the future of our state and nation, and whereas the people of Missouri have a long tradition of support in public education in their local school districts, and whereas local school boards are the ultimate expression of the unique American institution of representative governance of public school districts, and whereas local school boards acting on behalf of and in close connection with the people of their communities chart the direction of education in their communities, and whereas local school boards serve as the key community advocate for children, youth, and public schools. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Parson, Governor of the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim February 10th through the 16th, 2019, to be school board recognition in Missouri, and urge all Missourians to recognize school boards as they strive with their communities to improve our public schools through quality leadership. In testimony whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause to affix the great seal of the state of Missouri in the city of Jefferson this 26th day of November 2018. I want, on behalf of myself, I want to thank you. It's a thankless job, but I appreciate what you do. I appreciate your support of myself, Mr. Dalton, the teachers, and the kids in this, in the school district, in this community, because you only do it because you care about the kids, you care about teachers, because you wouldn't do it because it's glamorous, that's for sure. So I appreciate you, and I think everybody in this room does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go into the Principal and Director Reports. Dr. Hawes.
So it's January, we're in the middle of our mid-year benchmarks, so we are doing age group testing kindergarten through fourth grade. Kindergarteners are meeting their dyslexia screening requirement right now. The rest of them, we're excited to see their progress with work from their classroom teachers, their interventions, as well as the parting system. So we'll get that added this month and see how much their principal.
Thank you. Little School Principal, Mrs. Swafford.
This past month, we were able to start back our veterans in the classroom. I want to thank our local VFW, and Casey Mary Field is our seventh-grade history teacher. And every month for the rest of the year, seventh and eighth-grade students will have the opportunity to sign up and eat lunch with our veterans, and we just appreciate their support.
Thank you. High School Principal, Dr. Nash.
The High School Student Wellness Committee, through the Impact and Innovation Grant, has been meeting once a month, and they have done several things for the high school. They purchased a vending machine to sell healthy snacks to our students, and that profit is staying within the school rather than going to an outside company. They purchased six pieces of cardio equipment that you can see on the stage. There are two treadmills, two elliptical trainers, and two spin bikes, and they've also partnered with the Mock Wellness Center to start a high school sports and fitness program. They have hired a director, Kobe Ayers, and so far they've had two events with more events in the works. Also, we are an ACT testing site, and this last testing cycle, we had 21 Ava High School students who took advantage of the testing right here in the high school, as well as students from Ludi, Bradleyville, Gainesville, and Mansfield, and also a couple of homeschool students. So we are pleased to provide that for our students and the students within the community.
Thank you. Executive Reports, Dr. Dahl.
Had the opportunity last Thursday night. My wife and I attended the inaugural ball, where all representatives were sworn in. They had been sworn in, I'm sorry, the session started, but they, the Governor was there, all of our, our new representative, Carla Esslinger, former superintendent of the Ed School District. She was sworn in earlier that day, but it's a nice event for her, and they recognize all of the representatives and senators, so it was in Jefferson City, and so she had invited us to attend, so we had, my wife and I went to that. It was, it was a nice event. Got to speak with the Governor for a while. Governor Parson, though if you didn't like what he had to say, I have some good news for you. So like yesterday, he did kind of a state, a state address, and talked about his plans for his proposed state budget. He has proposed a $30 billion state budget, and it is structured around infrastructure and workforce development. He has a keen interest in broadband expansion, and he's proposing a very, a significant bonding project for roads and bridges throughout the state of Missouri, specifically to education. He is proposing $61 million to fully fund the formula, so $61 million additional dollars to fully fund the foundation formula. An additional $10 million for transportation, that question was there, but he has an additional $10 million in his budget for transportation, and they are proposing an additional $40 million for Proposition C. So Proposition C is a 1% sales tax. It can only be paid out how it's collected, but you can only pay down as much as you collect. So they anticipate, sales tax revenue has been growing. Income tax revenue is down. Sales tax revenue is growing in the state, so they anticipate an additional $40 million next year. There's actually some legislation right now to appropriate an additional $10 million for this year, because sales tax revenue's up and not enough was appropriated. So we could see some additional Prop C money this year that we were not expecting. Again, $40 million for, for next year. So that would, if $40 million for next year, that would be another $40, $40, $40-some dollars a child based on your unweighted ADA from the, from the prior year. So that would be a significant amount for us. It'd be, it'd be a decent amount that, that we would be very happy to accept. It would push, it would push it over about $1,050 per child, $1,060 per child per ADA for the prior year. Otherwise, we, financially, we are in good shape. We haven't got our January payment yet, but I will tell you, for those of you that have been on the board prior and heard me talk about estimating enrollment, we are, I have sent in our estimate. It'll be our first estimate this spring, so we won't see that until our February enrollment, but we're gonna be able to capture attendance hours and attendance dollars for our preschool program. This'll be the first year we've ever been able to do that. So we will get paid on ADA for seven, right now for 17 preschool kids, is what we, we can capture ADA on. Our K-12 ADA is very stable, so that hasn't changed, but our previous launch is up a little bit, IP is up a little bit, so we'll capture some more dollars on that. So hence the reason with preschool and those two numbers, we are estimating enrollment, which will help financially cover the budget deficit that we passed last June. It should help us be in that zero once again. So I'll give you some more figures on that after it comes in February.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Dahl.
Just have a couple things I want to touch on. First, I feel like I might have been talking to you about some of our testing data. We are starting to get some of our own data in, now with assessment changes of this past year, it's kind of hard. We're waiting for other districts' data to be released, if we have a point of reference. But we have got, the information we have received, it's gonna be useful to our teachers. We've got that to the teachers, so they can be working on what we do have at this point. Hopefully, next month, we'll be able to go into detail and break that down with you. APR, which basically is a scorecard that the Department of Education uses for districts, we'll be able to go through that, we hope, next month. We've got a preliminary look at that. There's not too many districts to go through and appealing mistakes, let's see, but it's scheduled to be released publicly by November, February.
February, yeah. February 1st.
So we should be able to go through that in detail next month.
So the way the state does that, we have a preliminary APR. Mr. Dalton and I know what that is, and we've been able to look at that. We can't share that publicly until February 1st. It's embargoed.
One of the things that was mentioned in the MSBA report, you're talking about helping train our kids to prepare for the workforce, we were looking at some, some items that are being proposed, and it's just some incentives for districts to try to expand. We already have some vocational programs here in our district. We're trying to expand those to incorporate more internship and job shadowing type opportunities. And I know that's something Dr. Nash always looking for opportunities to do that with our students, so, you know, we know that's something that our kids will benefit from. So those are some things you may be hearing about from us. And then another thing, they were talking about school safety. Their upcoming BD Day, we are looking forward to, every year we go through intruder training district-wide. Local law enforcement has been more than willing to help us and participate in that for several years. What will be unique this year, and we are looking forward to, with our resource officer, Mr. Brandon Reed, he's here every day. He sees ins and outs and the goings-on and just the layout of the building, but we're looking forward to his experience in law enforcement, but then also his experience here with us every day. We think he's gonna be a lot for, just some insight for our staff and administrators. That'd really be helpful.
We sent him, if you remember last fall, we sent him to be certified for intruder training, so he's licensed to be able to give us that.
We're looking forward to that. Love that.
Thank you. Next, we'll go ahead and do our discussion and action items, and we'll start with school contacts.
So you received a list of school contacts in my board meeting preview. Do you have any questions about those? We just have to designate those people that are in charge of those programs each year. I can go through those if you'd like me to, otherwise, I just need you to select them as presented, to bring them as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the school contacts as presented? Kenny makes the motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Michael seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six, seven. Next, we have our Community Involvement Program Review.
You had that, you were sent that information, and Mrs. Swafford does that, so she's not here to answer any questions. Mr. Dalton, I can try to answer those questions if you want us, if you have some. Otherwise, it's, we just need your approval as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve that Community Involvement Program Review. A motion? Kenny makes a motion. Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six, seven. Next, we have our Technology Program Review. Mr. Dahl.
You should have all got the program review package. Basically, it goes through what we've accomplished in the last year, like the boardroom TVs, the new server for our camera system. So we've gone from being able to keep 10 days of video to 21 to 30 days of video. So if we have an incident, that investment covers it. It also covers our 475 Chromebooks that we bought for the high school this past year. So that's put us to a one-to-one in the high school. We took all of our old technologies, the three- to four-year-old Chromebooks that we've had, and migrated them down to the other buildings, and that's put us onto about a two-to-one in the middle school, and a, you know, three, or almost really close to a one-to-one in the second through fourth grade, and then a two-to-one in the first grade, and then we're looking at doing some touch Chromebooks for the kindergarten and maybe the first grade. It goes through, let's see here, our strengths, you know, it's just, we've made huge gains in the last five years, especially the last two to three, since Dr. Dahl's been here, pushing for the one-to-one program and pushing for the growth in our technology. The way we've been able to utilize our DRAI funding and making our circuits speed faster, getting new switches, the in-house technology training that we've been doing with the teachers for the professional development's been helping them, and since we brought Ms. Thompson onboard to help me, she helps me in room, plus helps the teachers who have trouble with the technology using it, so it frees me up to do other things. As far as our weaknesses go, the biggest thing is funding. I mean, when it comes to technology, we always need funding. We need 200 Chromebooks probably for the middle school, so we can get them one-to-one. We need another 100, probably to 120, to get to the middle school up. Our outside bandwidth, when we add another 300 Chromebooks to the district, we're gonna have to kick up from 500 meg to 100, or to maybe a gigabyte. And training-wise, the students, I'd say from the sixth grade up to the 12th grade, they know as much or more than the teachers do. They're even sharp, especially from the sixth grade, when they've got those Summit machines in their hands. By the time they hit the high school, the kids that have been using the Summit machines in eighth grade, that have been at eighth grade, have no problems whatsoever with it. They're, they're sharp, they know what they're doing. They may be a little too sharp for the teachers too sometimes, because we the teachers too sometimes, because we've seen that. I think that's pretty much all I've got here, unless you have any questions for me.
John, a little bit. Two years ago, we were 100 meg, bandwidth.
100 meg, we're 50. 500 meg. Yeah, 50, when you came, we were 50 meg, we're at 500 meg now, and at any given time, we've got 180 meg of overhead bandwidth right now. So, that means we're using 320 pretty much consistent. Now, granted, we limit the kids' Chromebooks so they don't get more than a 5 meg upload, the guest ones, so if they tie their cellphones to the guest, it doesn't see any of our network when they come in, but it only gives them the 1 meg download speed, so it's not eating our bandwidth up like that.
Like the progress, we've got a long way to go.
It's, it's a growing period, the technology changes constantly, so it's not going to be long, we're, we're going to end up having to upgrade everything once again.
What, eventually, will we have to? About a gig.
Yeah, we'll have to jump up to a gig.
That's what we have, and I don't know that you get, I mean, I don't, I think that would be the one.
Um, yeah, for around, for 1,500 vices gig, it'll never, it'll, it'll be fine. We won't hurt at all.
Thank you. Roy. So, we need a motion or vote to approve the technology program review as presented. A motion? Michael makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Kerry six seconds. Next, we have Mr. Benson, the President of the Board.
Yes, I'm here on behalf of the Bus Route Owners Association. Our concern is incorrect information, and it's been around our community for four, five years, I guess, since we've had an issue with school busing, and primarily involves route owners paying, to main, I don't know, subject, I suppose, or object of our thought. I suppose, really, beginning, there was no doubt, was, was at the beginning of this, this, what we call a controversy, I suppose, in our community, for lack of a better word. And seemed like perhaps a lot of it was generated by administration at that time, and by various other means that's been passed around our community. Some of it's still, still, we find on social media, some says, I don't really follow social media, so I don't care to say me, I'm not a social media person, but nevertheless, the report is, it is there, all right? And some of it's really exaggerated, creates, creates a concern, I believe, certainly for the route owners, for the community, for the patrons of this district, and feel like it also should be a concern of the district itself. I understand one post was that we made $80 an hour, I have no idea how they qualify that, but I've been doing this for about 37 years, and I'm pretty sure that's not accurate.
It would not be accurate.
Very incorrect. So, our concern is about that, that incorrect, we like to have something, so stable, stable figures, some, some, some more accurate figures, I think it's important, it would be important to, like I said, to our whole community, certainly to, to us as individuals, individual owners. Of course, there's other, other information that's, that's, that's been dealt out that's incorrect too, just in general concerning buses. One of our concerns is, a statement that was made here in the, in the meeting that, I believe the statement was, was something like fourth worst in the state on our inspection, that our inspection wasn't grabbed, steps have been taken to correct that, but I can't find, I can't qualify that statement by any means, it's just an example of some incorrect information, seems to be passed about. But there was this company that was mentioned here, I believe, a couple of months ago, maybe in the November meeting, called, a company called Transpar, that does, I think that's correct, correct name, if I'm not mistaken, and that does analyze routes, we have an interest in that, that would resolve a lot of issues in our community, and settle some of these, some of these statements that are made. The, I find not to take, the expense of that is $5,000, and...
That not, that $5,000 does not include the routing, they would take a look at them, but they wouldn't design a routing.
Right. At any rate, that was their, that was their, that was their figure. The route owners have proposed that they would be interested in paying half of that bill, if you must, to reconsider that, to pay $2,500 of that $5,000, because we feel it's important to us, number one, it's important to the community, it's important to the patrons of this school district, and it's important, hopefully important to the school. So, that is our, our proposal, we appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's something you often discuss as a board, or it's totally your choice. Have some time to think about it.
How do you want to, it's up to you. I make a motion, we direct Dr. Dahl to go ahead and do the survey.
I second.
So... Sorry. Can I clarify? You want me to, you want me to contract with, not contract, to, to come to agree with Transpar, to do, to do a audit? That's what they do?
Well, the way I, the way I understand it, they look at everything, and they come back with figures and facts, a report, and tells how good we are, how expensive we are, if we're average, if we're below average, if we're above average.
Yes. You want them to do an audit of our transportation system? Just want to make sure. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Motion to contract Transpar for half.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, to do that.
Is that where your motion?
Yeah, I think they, they're going to pay half, right?
They'll pay $2,500, if it's $5,000, they'll pay $2,500.
And it seemed that was the issue when it was brought up, before, the cost, so I believe that's more than generous, it's very important to the bus drivers, I think it's very important to the community to do it, so I think that's more than generous on their part.
You second?
Yes, I do.
Park six seconds, further discussion?
So, I thought that doing Transpar, here, here's just my opinion, is, I think where this transportation system is, I, I agree with Dr. Dahl that he made during that statement of, that I think we're, I think they're doing a good job, I think they're, we're on track with a, with a transportation system. I don't necessarily think they're overpaid or underpaid, to be honest with you. It, it, it is about pay, is what, if I understood correctly, this is mainly about pay. I didn't think that we needed to spend $5,000 to, to do this at the time, but if the, if the owners or route association feels like they're, they, they want it, it's that important to them to spend $2,500? Seems like a small amount of pay, and we can, for this district to pay $2,500, and I think that we find out what, this is a third party, find out what it says. I, I mean, I, I think we're on, I think we're on track right now, I think things are, I think, I think things are getting better, I hope. I think that, I think that, from what I understand, the inspections are going, are going better, and I, I'm anticipating them to go, go well this next time. So, that was, that was me personally, that was, as far as pay, when we're talking about raises, that was for, you know, my vote was, we had two years, now I don't know about fourth worst, I don't know, don't know about that, but it did seem, from figures I saw, that it was, the inspection was pretty poor for two consecutive years, and I thought that we needed to get that up, that's what I thought, as far as the pay raises go. But yeah, I think $2,500 is, in my opinion, would be fair for the district.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. Ever since I've came on the board, and probably for a year and a half before this, there's been a, there's been a big divide, there were several to begin with, but we've worked them out, and we've got it going smooth, but there's still a big divide on the buses. You know, some of us think that they're overpaid, some of us don't, and, and each side can't figure out why the other one thinks that. And I think the magic word there is think, we think. I think if we do this, we'll have some facts and figures to go with, and maybe we can close this divide, and everybody get on the same page.
Another discussion? Motion and seconds on the table, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Four, four, those against, two against, passes four, two. Next, we'll do the MSBA policy update, 2018.
So, you have 18 policies and seven regulations that I've uploaded, we're not voting on those tonight. You also have, have a cheat sheet, it's an overview update that's uploaded in that Google Drive, administrators will be looking at these over the next month, I would ask you to take a look at these as well, we won't vote on these until February, which is our custom, but I wanted, but you have them currently, there is a lineup, so take your time.
Next, we need to set the school Avar on School District Board Reorganization Meeting for April.
So, we have to have it within 14 days of the election, and election is April 2nd, so Board Reorganization Meeting needs to be separate for April 16th and 6:15, is that when we usually do it, 6:15? April 16th and 6:15.
Next, I need a motion and a vote to set the Avar on School District Board Reorganization Meeting for April 16th, 2019, at 6:15. A motion?
I'll make the motion.
Lowell makes a motion, I have a second, Kenny seconds, all those in favor? Kerry six seconds. That concludes our meeting agenda for tonight, thank you, everyone, for attending. Our next meeting will be scheduled for February 21st, 6:30 in this boardroom, so need a motion to adjourn. Michael makes a motion, I have a second, Lowell, all those in favor? Kerry's six seconds.